I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first presentation tonight will feature Melena Fernandez. The third graders among our three elementary schools took part in a Massachusetts Municipal Association poster contest depicting facets of municipal government. Eighth graders also took part in an essay contest. We had many, many entries from our three elementary schools, not to mention other entries from all around the state of Massachusetts. Melena won third place from among all of the state entries. She is a third grader at the Jarick Elementary School. In addition to this recognition, she received a $50 check and a certificate. Mayor Vigent visited her classroom recently to officially recognize her. She's here tonight with her parents and her sister and Principal Ron Sanborn, who will show you all her award-winning poster. Mr. Sanborn and Melena, if you want to come up.
So here is Melena's amazing poster, and we need to thank Ms. Martinelli, our art teacher at Jarick School, who took this and framed it for you. Melena didn't know that she was going to be recognized yet again. She thought it was awesome, right? When the superintendent and Mayor Vigent came with some balloons and your class and Mom was there, and now we're doing it again.[125.86][125.86](Laughter). So, Melena, this is a big deal. Of all of the third grade students in Massachusetts, which there are thousands, you were one of the chosen. Congratulations.[137.13][137.13](Applause). So let's go in front of the podium. We'll hold it together, okay? See, Miss Gray go over there. No one will be here. Smile.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[154.19][154.19](Applause).
Madam Superintendent, first, thank you very much for encouraging our third grade and eighth grade for participating, and it's great to come out with a winner. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Think Mom and Dad are proud?
I think so.
Whitcomb School Intervention Plan.
Any potential changes to programs and/or interventions are brought before the school committee. Principal Daniels and his team will present their intervention plan this evening because there are certain budgetary impacts, and we welcome your questions. Also here this evening with him is Angela House, whom he will introduce in a very special way, I believe.
I shall. May I hold that for just a few moments?
You may.
Okay. Thank you to the committee for the opportunity to share our thinking with you a little bit earlier than the full-budget rollout. Angela is here tonight to support and also to be named as the next permanent assistant principal at Whitcomb, and I am very happy and we are all very lucky to have her.[242.81][242.81](Applause). And, of course, we miss Ms. Pritchard dearly but wish her the very best in her full-time parenting, and she looks very, very happy. So, it's a win all around. So, at Whitcomb, we have been chasing scores and numbers since I arrived, getting more comfortable with exactly who the student body is and what they need, although we have registered over 130 students in our school so far this year with a variety of needs, the majority of that being English-language learners. So, an ongoing, literally daily or certainly weekly challenge. So, the, in some ways, the goal keeps moving just a little bit. What we have recognized is that we have been gnawing at the edges of a much greater problem, that trying to create individual interventions or small-group interventions is not recognizing the fact that we have a large number of students who struggle especially with basic literacy skills. A month ago, I had the extended supervisory team directors and supervisors at our monthly meeting, and we talked about the importance of literacy for all of the scores and for success everywhere, that before that, students can answer the math problem and the science problem, they have to be able to read it. And we're moving more and more deeply into testing that requires much more complex literacy skills. So, we took a step back, and then rather looking at the edges of the problem, tried to look at the aggregate. This first slide talks a little bit about that. Using FastBridge, which is one of our data points that we issue three times a year, that's been in place all year this year, all year last year, and for part of fifth grade the year prior to that. We get FastBridge data from the fourth grade when we are placing students as well. The FastBridge data tells us that our students are roughly, 66 percent of them across all four grades, just barely at or below grade level. In the fifth grade, FastBridge uses a benchmark. We have 39 percent not at benchmark. Benchmark is not at grade level. So, that's below grade level, but a point that we use to decide what kind of interventions students need. In the sixth grade, 37 percent; in the seventh grade, 35 percent; eighth grade, 33 percent. So, you may see a pattern there. Not unique just to Whitcomb. You can see these NAEP national numbers show us that we have a national challenge around literacy, that students with the expectations that we have today for their literacy skills as a nation, we are not meeting that benchmark, and that has not moved over the last couple of years. We've kind of frozen in a bit nationally. Our MCAS results, and this is a difficult data point because in my three years at Whitcomb, we've given three different tests. My first year, we were MCAS, and then we changed over to PARC, and now we are MCAS 2. So, we don't have three truly comparable data points. MCAS 2.0 had very little information much in advance to practice with. We also switched to a fully digital system in this same timeframe, which is part of what we've been calling the perfect storm of small things that may have twisted our data to some extent. In the three grades, six, seven, and eight, we have 231 in sixth grade students out of a current 300 who are not achieving a grade level in MCAS LA. We have 255 out of 331 in the seventh grade, and we have 233 out of 303. This isn't a new problem, but an ongoing cumulative challenge. These students need more than one year's progress. The problem is, we only have one year, one year at a time. So, part of this presentation is about where do we find the time? Where can we do a better job of intervening with more students with a goal of moving them forward more than a single year's growth? The district, and this slide is certainly not my area of expertise. The district has adopted Journeys, and I had an opportunity a month or so ago to do a walkthrough for an hour or so with Ms. Brown at Jarick, and one of the things that we observed literally, practically in every classroom was Journeys and Foundations being used skillfully across the board, and it was easy for me to imagine that those students would arrive with a skill set that is different than the skill set that the current students at Whitcomb have. But the current students at Whitcomb are the ones that I'm charged with doing my best to educate. So, we had to go back and think about that bigger challenge. When a teacher or a student achieves what's considered a full year of growth, that's SGP, that's a check, job well done. Then there are those exceptions, those one or two teachers who are able to bring out 1.2, 1.3 years, their SGPs into the 66 or low 70 range, but that's, those are exceptions. If we are driving to a destination that's 60 miles away, and we drive 60 miles an hour, we get there in one hour. There's no, we have to change some other factor to get there faster or for it to take longer. And education is the same way. When you're doing the sixth-grade curriculum, you have a sixth-grade year when you need to pick up skills that were taught earlier but didn't stick appropriately, then you need to find the time to do that. So, that's our goal. Yes, we are planning a miracle, but we'll do that one day, one step at a time. We have been answering this challenge in a variety of ways. This long list is that, first of all, collecting over the three years that I've been there, FastBridge has become a much more useful and broadly-applied tool. It was just being initiated when I arrived, and it has been the one steady, while it's a minimal measure, it's the one steady measure that we've had over the three years. Vocabulary.com, which is being used in ELA and social studies classes across the school, is a Tier One intervention that teachers are using in every grade level and in every curricular area. That's across the board. Newzella is not on the list, but this is an application that we were just recently able to acquire that allows teachers to download leveled reading material in content areas so that every student can study the same subject, but not necessarily at the same reading level, which is, keeps that content piece moving. One of the problems with interventions is when you pull out to learn what you need to catch up on, something else is happening in that classroom, and you've lost it. Newzella allows, and especially social studies, but it's not limited to social studies in any way, an opportunity to keep the content moving for every student, but at a reading level. Some 80 percent of what students need to learn in middle school, they learn through reading. So, if you don't bring the skill, you have a major problem. We looked in the fall, as we started to digest this material, and thought, what can we do school-wide right now? We already have a schedule, we have faculty, we have a budget in place. What can we do that recognizes the challenge? And the decision was that we needed to read more. And that's something that, since my arrival, I have believed. We've been pushing classroom libraries out of central locations and into classrooms, pushing teachers to use multiple books rather than single novels, and what we decided to do was to take 15 minutes of every single day, stop, and read. Read anything that the student chooses. I brought this to the faculty in late November. With the plan, it required a very slight change in schedule, a couple minutes off of each period, and a reconfiguration of all the afternoon duties and dismissal schedule. I expected at my school council meeting, when I was describing it, I said, "We'll have a rough six weeks getting students and faculty on board with this," except for we didn't. On day one, I walked to school, and we were reading. I have not had a single faculty member in saying, "Oh, this doesn't work." We're in art. I go into the auditorium where there could be a music class of 60s, sit down and read with them. Folks are reading. We are recognizing that reading, we're seeing it in the lunchroom. More and more and more students are carrying an independent reading book, something that wasn't a tradition at Whitcomb. So, this doesn't solve the problem for those who have difficulty reading, but much like every place else in life, practice makes perfect. So, doing some reading helps. 100 Words that Every Middle Schooler Should Know is an ongoing Tier One intervention that Mr. Reese has provided us with. Just Words is a Lexia-related, Wilson, excuse me, Wilson-related program that we have been able to bring to 60-odd fifth graders. We identified 91 that could have benefited, but only had the opportunity to provide 60. You'll see later in the presentation that that's to be expanded next year. We, as a faculty, have decided to limit our various descriptions of how students should think about writing to claim, evidence, and reason. In the profession, there are any numbers of approaches, none of them wrong, but one of our problems was we just were using too many of them. So, students were going from class to class with the acronyms being different. We stopped, looked at it, settled on the simplest, most direct one, and one that easily applies to the expectations that MCAS 2.0 presents, which is extensive writing. At grade five and six, we have interventions in the enrichment block. Grade five has been completely rescheduled and assigned to interventions depending on need, reading interventions, decoding, comprehension, students who have all of the four areas of need, and that comes to, we have nearly 50 percent, 189 out of 401 students in an intervention every day in the cycle. That's an hour of targeted intervention on their behalf or with them. We continue to have the ELA and Math II courses that have been in the district for some time, in Whitcomb for some time, and that will be part of the plan, a rethinking of how those work, and then an expansion of that. One of the things that, when we looked at our scores and listened to folks who, we had a consultant in, and his quote was that you are doing, your scores do not reflect what's going on that I just saw today. And one of the things that we think we have done poorly in the last couple of years is, while trying to lower anxiety about testing, we may have gotten to the point where the message was, "Dad, don't worry, whatever happens will be fine." And so, we are coming back, not to create a hardly anxious middle school, but this is important. Perseverance, grit is my favorite term for that, matters. Trying again is what it's all about. No opting out, and the entire faculty has been teaching using our ROR model, perseverance, grit, and pride lessons, and then building those additional lessons on team. So, that's the message. We don't quit. We don't get it the first time, that doesn't matter. And we have the ongoing reading classes and Wilson reading for students in special education who are assigned to those interventions. So, we certainly have not, this isn't a sudden, "Oh, we have to do something, we never thought of it before." This is, we have to do the things we're doing on a much bigger scale. So, going forward, how do we get to more students and accelerate growth? As I mentioned before, it's about time. We have 180 days, we have six and a half hours a day. It doesn't expand, it doesn't contract. Well, there are those snow days, thank you, Madam Superintendent, but other than that, we still get our 180. We looked at the schedule. We believe that middle school students should have art, should have music, should have PE, should have health, should have all those things outside of the core to have a well-rounded education. We have one area where we were already making a judgment about which students qualified and which students did not, which students needed other help, and that area was world Looking at our scores, we came to the conclusion that we had many more students who needed another skill set more than they needed world language. That is not a statement that world language is not important or valuable. This is a very hard decision to make. We all believe that it is important, that it is valuable, but if you are struggling the basic skill set that you need to be successful in using, reading, writing, English on a daily basis, that those problems have to be addressed first. So, then we took a look at the scores that I showed you earlier and the students who are currently taking world language, and decided that we had about 50 percent more students in world language than were proficient in literacy skills that they needed to be successful across the board. Then we started to take a look at how could we service, which I'll get to in a minute, those students who we might take out of world language or not offer, because there's no world language in sixth grade. So, the incoming seventh grade class would not be offered world language in as large numbers as the current seventh and eighth. And then, how would we deal with current seventh graders who are already in a language and moving forward into eighth grade? Looking at the numbers, we came to a very difficult decision that one of the things that we should do is to suspend mandatory instruction at Whitcomb for at least the next two years. We know that we have this group of students moving through, and that we at least have two years, perhaps three, before we'll be ready to go back to offering a third language. We wanted to maintain Spanish and Latin. We wanted to maintain all, but that's non-viable within the budget limits and staffing limits, and the numbers of students who would be available to take an additional course. So, we will be moving approximately 184 students out. We have 360 students in world language now. We will not be offering world language to approximately 184 of those students. Those exact numbers change based on enrollment, but that's a 50 percent cut in the number of students taking world language. We will then add, using the teaching slots that are available, the FTEs, we will add literacy and intervention course instruction that's going to be built from the ground up. We have had a tendency in our ELA 2 and our math to extend whatever the sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade curriculum was, but instead to look at these as a full-time course, but a course that's designed to intervene. We can do that numbers-wise, in part now because of the Chromebook and Wi-Fi situation at Whitcomb, which is very strong, and many of these interventions work well and offer themselves up well online. So, in our nearly one-hour teaching blocks, students can, you can take a class of 20, divide them into two, 10 and 10. 10 can be doing the computer side of whatever intervention. They could be in two or three or four different interventions, while the teacher face-to-face does 30 minutes of work with the other 10. Then you swap off. Everyone is getting individual attention as well as the computer practice or computer-based practice. So, that's how we intend to service those students who would be coming out of language. Let me see. See, the funding, there are personnel issues here that would be inappropriate to talk about in session tonight. I can share that anyone who might be directly impacted by these changes has already, I've spoken with them, and the same thing has happened at the high school, and while no one likes change, the ideas were well-received and understood. And then, Ms. Murphy and I, we have talked about a move of Title I funds that have been focused in the elementary schools as they get Journeys and Foundations going into middle school to fund the additional position or two that we would need to make this run along with training and support. This literacy course will need to be created and built, require some training. Sixth grade teachers will be doing more intervention during the enrichment block, and we want to bring Just Words to more people. There's also a new Lexia-related application that we just saw that looks very, very promising, the training of which is minimum, but it looks like it can be very easily adapted to many of our needs, and Mr. Ploddy is exploring the opportunity there to have several hundred licenses or perhaps a school license to use that intervention as well. Academic support, one of our areas of testing where we show great strain is with our special education students. Academic support is a time when special education students get individualized instruction. We want to sit down with the special education staff and rethink the way that that time is used. It has a tendency, certainly not across the board, but it has a tendency to become catch-up or an extension of the classroom experience, which is a positive thing, but its primary intention is to build those skills so that that child doesn't have that problem in the classroom. So, we're working our educational team leaders, we've had that conversation with them, and have plans, and have started to speak with our special education staff about doing a better job of targeting interventions during these periods as opposed to keeping kids necessarily caught up. Keeping them from falling behind would be our goal. So, this is just a summary of some of the training that would be necessary. Power-up is the Lexia-related program that is really amazingly user-friendly, very well-designed, and the training, the high school has already started to pilot 40 slots there, and we will have 40 slots to pilot in two different class settings, so we'll have a sense of how it might be applied before we are gone in June and be making summer plans and creating these literacy courses where they'd be used. With the broader faculty, we'll continue to use FastBridge three times a year. There will be new student dashboard opportunities for teachers that they will be trained on so that they will be able to more easily, Aspen is a very, very rich tool, but not an easily accessible tool all the time. This will give teachers an opportunity, as our professional learning communities, our teams get tighter, and that has been growing steadily, to sit and look at student data very quickly and then make tweaks as they go along in the Tier One general instruction, and train all staff to use progress monitoring tools within their classrooms without necessarily stepping out into a FastBridge or a separate application. So, those are our plans. It's a difficult change to ask for and to present, but I honestly believe that this is the very best that we can do for Whitcomb students next year, to get away from nibbling at the edges and jump into addressing the entire challenge. Happy to take questions?
Questions for the committee. Ms. Hennessy.
Well, you guys already had the preview. So, definitely was pretty shocked. Thank you for the presentation, though. It's very thorough. I would love to have the data points, though, because that was some of it that I had asked for, so I'd love to get that written down as opposed to just hearing it and trying to write it down quickly, because I'm not sure I'm following all of the numbers. And I think that that was some of the things that hit me as I was reviewing the packet, was understanding the use of Title I funds and how many kids can get the services and get the support, and then those kids that fall in the middle that don't, and that's my concern. (end of transcript) And that's my concern, is because I appreciate the need and very much so. I think all of us recognize that there's an issue. But how to get to that issue, that is something that you all need to figure out. That said, I'm not a fan of trying to get to this issue while taking away something that we fought so long and hard to implement on getting world language in there. And I'm quite concerned about that, because I think also we set up the community and the parents and the students in that direction, and to then pull it out from underneath of them, I think is not appropriate. I think that's quite unfair, frankly. So I would challenge us to look at some other opportunities, because 184 students who've already started down the path of starting to learn world language to then be turned away, and I would say I'm probably one of them as a parent, I'm frustrated. That means my child has spent a year where that's not necessarily going to be utilized. So that's concerning, and that's not the end-all, be-all, because our goal really needs to be literacy for the students. So I definitely need the data points, the information, because I want to make sure that if we're going to be making such a grand change, that we are actually hitting a larger net and not missing some of those kids that are normally sitting in that average area but still really need to get the services. And that's always been a concern of mine, because I think, you know, first exposure and when we were talking about Title I services hitting the elementary schools, there were always kids that were on the fringe. And, you know, that's not okay either. We have to find a way. So then I guess my challenge is, are we then looking at how are we going to work with the core classes and supporting them and building them up so the core classes are able to really be that support system to grow our literacy as well? Because as you said, you can't get to a math problem if you can't read it. So we've got to figure out something somewhere. So I'm big on wanting to know the numbers, and that's not something that was in here. And so trying to react to it tonight is very tough for me.
Mrs. Hennessy, I'd like to just clarify the plan moving forward for those in world language. Next year will be a transition year, and as Mr. Daniels said, we don't want to talk specifics about personnel, but there is a staff member who has multiple certifications who will be able next year, upon her return, to service the students who are in Mandarin VII to complete that transition.
So Mandarin is not going away for students that currently were taking it?
Not for seventh graders. There is a transition year for next year. After that year, to echo what Mr. Daniels said, likely for two years, looking at the scores, keeping in mind that, you know, we're looking for progress, but we're not sure. We don't want to say now it'll be one or two years. But Mandarin, it's suspension here. It's not the end of Mandarin at the middle school. So...
And I'm sorry, I have to kind of chuckle at that, because I know we've all sat around this table for a while on bringing world language in.
Yes.
There was the, you know, foreprong of smattering of world language that was tried, you know, at different grade levels. So I just, I hear that. I still have a lot of concern and hesitancy about getting rid of a program that took a long time on trying to get it in. And for years, we made it a part of when STEM was starting. That was one of the visions of where we were growing that. So I just, you know, I really want to have some conversation around that before...
And Spanish and Latin will still continue at the middle school with not as many students in it, just to be clear. I'm not sure if everyone understood that.
Yeah, no, no, no. Thank you.
So they can still access up to AP, taking one year at the middle school and then four at the high school. So it is for not as many students, but it is not completely being taken out. I just needed to clarify that.
Okay. No, thank you.
And just a clarification on that 184 number. Those are slots, not students. So half of those students are currently eighth graders and will be moving on to the high school. So those would be seventh grade slots that won't be offered. So those aren't students. They are the current seventh graders. Some of those students who do have a world language now won't qualify to continue, but there will be an opportunity for those who do qualify to continue.
And so qualify, help me, what's the qualification?
That they're at a proficiency level.
Okay.
Can I just clarify, because of the Title I question as well? We have school-wide programs. So as long as we had the ability to schedule and had the staff to do it, any student at Wickham School or at our elementary school, I mean, at the elementary schools, the Title I-funded positions, students were transitioning in and out of those small group interventions. The problem is right now, in the fifth grade, just for example with the Just Words, even though that wasn't Title I, we didn't have enough staff to schedule all of those students that needed that intervention. So it is all hands on deck trying to provide enough staff for the Wickham School.
And it also sounds like licenses as well, because it sounds like some of our licenses, we only have a certain amount of licenses available.
For some of these applications, yes.
For some of them.
Yep.
Other question.
So just for my clarification, what I thought I heard you say was that really the purpose of this exercise is, in fact, to make sure that those kids that were falling through the cracks are going to get the services that perhaps they weren't getting before.
Absolutely.
So it's just broadening the interventions and adding some more interventions, but broadening them to a larger group of children, because there are kids falling through the cracks, obviously.
There absolutely are.
And something has to give. There's only so many hours in a day, and we can cut out music or we can cut out art. You're choosing in this to cut out world language for a couple of years until we get back to proficiency.
Parts of world language.
Right.
Yeah, to shrink it, not to walk away. Absolutely.
Other questions from the committee? Eighth question, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, Brian, for your presentation. I guess I'm disappointed, as I think most of us are, with the world language, because as was said, we worked very hard for something. And while I understand, and it's a give and take, one of my concerns is hearing about the reading levels or lack of reading levels. If I look back at presentations about what our focus had been on MCAS for the last 10 years, it was on long composition. That's all we talked about. The kids can't write, the kids can't write, the kids can't write. And now we're talking, we're saying they can't read. So are we putting the two together still? Are we still going to be focusing?
Oh, no, absolutely. That's why I've used the term literacy.
No, I know, but we're, you know, again, did we neglect one for another? And now we're saying, well, we put so much work in here. You know, as you said, maybe we're too relaxed about what we're focusing on as opposed to the literacy as a full package, because we can't lose focus. These kids can't fall through the cracks any longer.
And I just looked at Brian, and I said, do you want me to answer that? So I'm going to chime in here. We realized, looking at the data a couple of years ago, that what we were doing for literacy instruction was not getting us the progress that we wanted. Our population has changed. The materials that we were using needed to change, and some of our methods had to change. And we have done that, but we're only in year two. And so what everyone's saying is, we see a significant difference in the elementary school, and we think we are positive we're on the right track. And Brian will say he's confident that in a couple of years, he'll be able to change things, what he's doing. But right now, we need to make sure that we are giving explicit intervention to those students, because we have to change what we're doing at the Wickham School like we did at the elementary schools. Thank you.
And the evolving population, it's a factor, not an excuse. It has, I've only been here, and this is my third year, and the change that I have seen in the Wickham population in three years is enormous. And that has been a huge challenge to the faculty, and my hat's off to them. As Mary said, the faculty has answered the call. The instruction is markedly different. The pieces of the Niasse report that we addressed over the last three years don't exist anymore. Our most recent consultant walking through, that was the first thing that he said, a very small thing, but in some ways, one of those indicators. When I arrived, we would find students almost always sitting in rows if you walked through the school. Today, in our Tuesday morning meeting that we have every week, someone just made the comment, you just don't see that much anymore. And to the teachers' credit, that's doing that with furniture that really wasn't made for doing this kind of group work. But they're seeing that instruction has to be more collaborative, more student-centered, more interactive, and I'm very, very proud of the way that Wickham staff has answered this challenge.
Go ahead.
Sorry, just more. Trying to understand the split. So Journeys, I believe that you were saying is addressing for K to V. So the fifth graders are being handled in a different way than the sixth through eighth currently?
Yes. Well, the fifth graders have the Journeys interventions, and because of the way they are on two-person teams, we can schedule their interventions differently. And that required, Ms. House can speak to this one, because she did the numbers work on it. We remade intervention for fifth grade this fall after seeing the challenge. And one of the things we went to the fifth grade team with, when teachers work in teams, they get to know their 50 or 60 kids, they want to stay with those kids. And we went to them to break one of those fundamental rules and say, we need to spread these kids for intervention out across, because we need to get everybody's talents. And we need to be able to break down many more individual interventions than we can do on a two-person team. So the 18 of you need to find a different way. And their answer was, yes. Won't be easy, but yes, we'll do that.
Okay. And then FastBridge. Currently, are you doing FastBridge ELA assessments for all grades three times a year?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, when did that finally start taking place, that ELA? Because if I remember correctly, FastBridge initially went into Wickham more used for math rather than ELA.
I checked out with Ms. Ryan today, and she said, no, we started with ELA.
Not at Wickham.
The plan was to first start with math, but when they saw the data, they jumped on the ELA very quickly. They wanted to make sure that they had the data points for both, and then also insisted that the fourth grade aligned their data exactly with what was going on at Wickham, so that they had the through line for every student that came through.
But we've had everybody...
That was a different conversation than what we've had previously.
Yeah, we planned it slower, but they went faster.
We've had all four grades, all of last year, all of this year. And we used upcoming fourth grade data extensively last year to pot students, to put them into classes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? I personally understand the frustration of all the committee members and the leadership. And I don't have the answers, but I think we hire people that are making recommendations, the superintendent, the team leaders, the educators, and we have to do something to stem the tide of the 64%, because we haven't done a very good job in that. The only thing I do want to say is, although I'm looking on moving in this direction for results, we need to hold the same leaders, their feet to the fire. If it's not working, there will be ramifications for it. Any other committee members? Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
Did you want a steam thing, or are you a collector? Thank you very much.
Madam Superintendent?
I would like to thank Principal Daniels and his team at the middle school for answering the call to urgency. Some of these are bold measures. I agree they need to take place. He jumped in and tried, and I do applaud him and his team for the leadership. The school is a wonderful place to walk through, and I thank you. So my report, I wanted to start with talking about the Davis Companies interviewing training, which took place on February 1st at the campus of Davis Companies in Marlboro. We took 14 members of our leadership team. We explored various interview simulations, follow-up questions, reference checks, and how to, most importantly for me, how to tease out our identified attributes of humble, hungry, and smart. I think we can say that everyone learned something from the morning. HR Director Patty Brown will formulate some of the learning into essential tweaks for our leadership team, and that will happen on Thursday. And I want to thank her for her leadership in brokering the conversations, because this company doesn't normally work with educators. So she laid some foundation. It was a very worthwhile morning. Also, thanks to Mayor Vigon for offering the suggestion for this training. It was terrific. My next four items are all grouped, as you can see, under the heading of Early College Opportunities. We are very, very lucky in Marlboro at the high school for the opportunities we have for our students. You might have seen last Friday in the Metro West, there was an article that headlined Framingham and Milford entering into the early college space. We were mentioned in the middle of the article as being sort of the model in Massachusetts. I wish it had led with that, but that's okay. We'll take our credit when we can. So let me continue with these four bullet points. We have a wonderful grant opportunity with LaSalle College, the purpose of which is to increase the pipeline of minority students in education. We have funding for mentoring. We have parent meetings, workshops, campus visits, and dual enrollment opportunities at no cost for our students who qualify. Recently, and this is an unbelievable story to me, Mrs. Buckley was telling me that our campus visit recently, some of the comments of our students caught the attention of an advisor who went home and her mom, on behalf of Flatley Foundation, persuaded them to bequeath $800,000 in grant money to LaSalle. And we have identified a senior who is applying for this and has a very good chance of getting this. So again, this is for first-generation students applying to college with the intent of pursuing a degree in education, which is just terrific. 100 Males to College is another grant program we're participating in, in conjunction with Mass Bay and Framingham State. Our students' males, again, underrepresented, underserved youth, with an emphasis on males, are given some tutoring, some advising, some college access, some tips on dual enrollment, as well as professional skill and career development. And we have counselors setting up office hours at the high school two days a week. Counseling and early college program manager with Hawaii's Partnership for Education at the University of Hawaii attended Dan Riley's presentation at a conference in Washington this past fall. Hawaii is new to early college initiatives, and they were very excited about the work that the Marlboro Public Schools is doing. They are having an early college statewide convening beginning on Friday, March 2nd, and Sharon Buckley will be presenting at this convening in three breakout sessions. She's going to talk about what we currently do, the history of the program, how it builds on other initiatives we have, and how we interface with our business partnership and our college, community college partnerships. All expenses are paid, of course. There's no cost to our district. The audience will be the president of the University of Hawaii, superintendent of Hawaii Schools, chancellors, deans, administrators, and so on. It's quite a feather in our cap, and we're pleased that we're at the table as a proof point district. I included in the packet a memorandum of agreement that I recently signed with the president of QuinSigum and Community College. It was terrific to meet Dr. Pedraha. He is new to QuinSig, coming out of California, which is well ahead of Massachusetts in the early college space. And we talked at length about this initiative and how it can be even better for our students in Massachusetts. So if you look at the memorandum of understanding, some of the highlights, this is a great deal for our students, terrific deal. $100, this is at no expense to them, per course offered onsite at Marlboro High School. We have our staff trained as adjunct professors, and if they take a course online or on campus, it's $4.50. I might add that the $100 per course would be $4.50 if they took it without, you know, not being under the auspices of Marlboro High. Further, if they choose to transfer these credits to QuinSig, it is a rate of 25% discount. So I'm really pleased that this partnership is continuing, and Worcester is currently looking at that partnership as well, and we are in the forefront of that. So that's it on the early college opportunities forefront. I would be remiss if I didn't call out the following students who were selected to participate in the All-State Music Concert. Kaylee Davis, Abigail Purchase, Timothy Goliger, Joseph LaFallette, Noah Ogden, Thomas Kaylee Davis, Abigail Purchase, Timothy Goliger, Joseph LaFallette, Noah Ogden, Thomas Redden, and Austin Wise. These students will perform with 500 of our most talented students from across the state. They are to be known as Symphony Hall Scholars. These musicians will perform at Boston Symphony Hall on Saturday, March 3rd. At your place is a hard copy of the Assabett Valley Collaborative Annual Report. I'm pleased to say that we continue to enjoy our partnership with Assabett Valley Collaborative in the job-alike meetings. I go once a month to the board meetings, but I know the technology directors meet, curriculum directors meet, business managers meet, special education directors meet. It's a terrific group, and it's led very capably by Kathy Cummings. I am here also to remind you about the Summit on Poverty. If you choose to attend the Summit on Poverty at Clark University, please let Patty Sibilio know. We currently have Michelle Bodenhendler, who's going for her second year, and Mary Murphy and Mike Bergeron. That concludes my report.
Any questions for the Superintendent? CNN. Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you. I want to start with some proposed changes to the first day of school for kindergarten and preschool. In the past, incoming kindergarten students would attend kindergarten screening the last week of June. In accordance with Massachusetts Special Education Law, all students entering kindergarten must be screened to insist in identifying any issues that may require special education services. Over the last few years, we have used early childhood educators to complete all aspects of this screening. In September, specialized staff, such as the occupational and physical therapist and speech-language pathologist, and classroom teachers, would then rescreen many of these same students based on the results that we received in June, and then additionally screen the approximately 100 incoming students that registered over the summer. We are proposing a delay in the kindergarten and preschool school year to adjust the screening dates to the fall. This change would allow us to use all of our highly qualified staff, pre-K and K, as well as district-wide OT, PT, and speech to complete the screening and appropriately identify students who need additional screening, as well as to collect information in order to complete kindergarten classroom placements. So we are proposing that kindergarten screening take place August 29th and the 30th, which is the first two days of school for all other students. And on the first day of school, it will not start until 10:00 a.m., so we can avoid the chaos of all the other students. We don't want incoming kindergarteners walking into that the first day of school. Classroom assignments would take place on, be assigned on Friday, August 31st. That is not a teacher day. That is an administrative day, so the school administrations would be doing the classroom assignments. The Early Childhood Center would have their orientation on Tuesday. Kindergarten orientation, first day, ride the bus, would be on Wednesday. That would be when families and students would be notified of their classroom teachers. They would meet them. They would go to the class and do the orientation. And then the first day of school for all kindergarten and early childhood staff would be Thursday, September 6th. So that is our proposal. The Spring Science and Engineering Showcase, the Science and Technology Engineering Department will be holding a new event to celebrate student learning, the next generation of our traditional science and engineering fair typically held in February. The Spring Science and Engineering Showcase will feature a broader range of student work than a traditional science fair. Students from all science and engineering courses will be invited to display posters, projects, in-or-out effects that reflect their learning throughout the year. As a result, we will not be holding our traditional science and engineering fair in February. Rather, all students who have completed projects within science fair deadlines will be given the opportunity to participate in the Worcester Regional Science and Engineering Fair to be held at WPI on March 9th. We will share the names and project titles as soon as they become available. And finally, since the calendar is on the agenda for tonight, I wanted to provide some data on the Professional Development Day attendance. So I included in my report a chart of the attendance on our two full-day PD days, as well as the random Tuesdays that were the following weeks. I did not go for a Monday or a Friday. I just, I picked another random Tuesday afterwards. And I did have a question about how many numbers of staff approximately we had for each of those categories. So if you look at the, on November 7th, there were seven of the 117 paraeducators that were not in attendance. Four out of the approximately 55 para-behavior tags. Three out of the approximately 32 office support. 20 out of the approximately 450 teachers. And 1.5 out of the approximately 42 administrators. And this was based on the Excel spreadsheet that I sorted, so district staff didn't count in the 42. But those are the numbers to give you just a general idea of the attendance on the two full-day PDs, because I know that's always a question of how we're doing with that. Thank you.
Ms. Matthews.
Mary, thank you for the, the question on the postponement or the changes to the calendar for the ECC and kindergarten. While I completely agree with that, in order to not have to go rescreening things, I guess if I were, if I had a kindergartner, again, to not know my child's teacher until after a screening the week before would make me feel probably a little more nervous than I'd want to be. And if I've done, if I've done the diligence and I've registered in the spring like I'm supposed to, why wouldn't we just be screening and telling the kids that come during the summer that you won't know who your placement is until that day before because of, we're going to do the screening? Anybody who registers from June 1st on would be the ones who don't get assignments and don't get screened until these days.
The problem, one of the major problems with the timeline is that we do not have occupational therapists, physical therapists, or speech-language specialized staff doing the screening at the end of June. So to be able to really know that data, you do not know, the whole idea of the screening is to identify students that potentially need additional services, plus the EL staff will be screening students as well. So it's classroom placement?
So we really need screening twice, though. I mean, you, I mean, you need the staff for it to take those worries away, even for the ECC kids. Because it, and I know a lot can change from June to September, but I'm not sure. I'm just trying to talk out loud about, you know, so many parents don't want to give their child up to begin with, even though that's the appropriate place for them to be going. But...
The only other option we had, and the reason why we did the timeline that we, is it's pretty aggressive to be able to do the screening and to place the students with the data it is. We did not want to delay, we would have the information on Friday. We could mail it out on Friday and they, but it would delay possibly to that following week. The only way that we could start the week after Labor Day and have all the data that we need to make sure that we're making thoughtful discussions and that the classrooms are well-balanced and we have all the information would be either to do it this way, is what the elementary principals believe, or delay it another week.
Oh, and honestly, I don't even have a problem with delaying it another week either because they're not, they don't fall under the 180-day requirement, and it's, so, you know, whatever it takes to place them properly.
It is full day.
Right, exactly. It's full day and to give them, give the staff the opportunity to place them properly. But I'm just, I was just thinking, you know, you had four, so, you know.
I have a question about it. Well, first of all, the screening on the 29th and the 30th, is that like by appointment?
We would, we would, at each of the buildings, though. So it's, you know...
It's not like you're having them all show up at the same time.
No.
Like a timeframe or appointment or something?
And they would be, we figured it out, there'd be at least six different stations at each of the schools going on. So we would be able to do large numbers at the same time.
And to echo what Heidi said, as a parent, I would be worried about like, well, I don't know who my child's teacher is. On the flip side, how do the teachers feel not knowing how many students they're going to have or who's in their, like, don't they make like their little name tags and all that stuff that gives them like no time to do that either?
So if you look at the schedule, we did talk about that. It gives them the, when the Early Childhood Center, because they're not going to be doing on their orientation day, that's a kindergarten dedicated day to label all the cubbies and get their classroom all set and ready.
That was another question.
They'll have all their time.
So the September 4th incoming kindergarten students aren't there yet?
No, no.
Okay. So the fifth is the proposed ride the bus to school day with the parent?
The orientation, yes. The only difference in that whole, the orientation, is that that would be the, you're not getting the letter, you're getting the welcome to kindergarten, you're not getting the classroom teacher letter.
So how do they, so they don't find out who their teacher is until they come to school on that fifth?
On the orientation.
And so what, their names are called?
Yes. And they get to line up with their classroom teacher and go to their class.
Okay. It's different.
How, how mu, when have they been getting their classroom teacher assignments the last couple of years?
About, about two weeks, yeah, about a week.
A week or two.
Yeah.
So it's about a week.
Dramatically different.
It's not like they find out in the summer, no.
Oh, sure.
Any other questions? Ms. Senesi.
Are we done with that kindergarten? We're done. Okay.
So, just was trying to go over some of the information that you sent, and thank you for, and that's why I wanted to kind of send ahead of time, so it wasn't like jump on and not have all of it. I guess, and I was trying to kind of work through this information a lot today. I was, you know, getting hold of Mrs. Matthews about some of it, just kind of bantering because I feel like at the Whitcomb School, we've had a lot of wanting kids to be working on their projects together in the classrooms as groups, getting their time, right? And, and we had been kind of following through, moving them into high school, at least, I would say from STEM standpoint, a lot of project-based learning. You're all working together, and you have that time to collaborate. Things have shifted with the shift in schedule. And now with this other shift, now we're asking for these kids to have taken much more of an individual onus to have moved forward to start on getting on to these science fair projects where we've kind of led them down the path for a while now of you're going to do this together, and you're going to get assigned groups, and you may not necessarily know or like the person, but you're going to figure out how to work with them. And I'm just kind of concerned on that transition timeframe because if we've kind of predisposed our kids to expectation of working together with whomever they're going to be assigned to and thinking that they're going to be working in groups, I'm not really sure that their large majority that we're going to on their own go on out and start a science fair project because they're kind of thinking they're going down the normal ship of, we're all going to work on this together. So while I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing to have a shift, I just think that to make the shift happen really well, you've got to communicate it really well and kind of send them off in the right way. And I'm concerned if we really had the opportunity to do that well.
And I think there's two pieces because although, and I think it was pretty clear, and it's very clear when we talk to the science department at the high school, they feel that the science fair has been a tradition, and it's sad to lose a tradition, but they want, don't want to lose that process to a certain extent. They want to change the timeline. So the projects are still happening, and they're still going to happen, but they see it not as an artificial someone else's timeline, they're more natural for when their courses are prepared to be working on a project. And that's why the Spring Showcase or whatever it's going to be called is designed to showcase the student work from all areas at that point. They also want to make sure, because of the way the limits, some of the science fairs are, they want it to be the whole school. One of the questions that you had was, does that mean Mission to, Mission to Mas is going to stop?
Just as, yeah, an example.
As an example, but no, absolutely not. That's still going to continue. But with the change, shift in the schedule this year, they made the decision that that was going to be the focus project that that particular STEM team was going to be working on. And that might be the true for multiple different courses. They may decide that they're going to be changing. When the ninth grade shifts next year, if they shift to teams, I think the vision is that each of those teams would have a project like that and that that event at the end of the year, not someone else's timeline, but Marlboro High School's timeline, would be showcasing all of those projects at the same time.
Which all makes sense. You know, I think a part of it is how does it get communicated out so that, you know, people don't necessarily lose that opportunity?
Right.
As well, you know, I hear you about the tradition thing, which, you know, great to have tradition. Yes, you can change away from it, but I think it's also kind of where you talk about having the acknowledgement of the kids having the opportunity, just like we're talking about, you know, BPA students, they're, they're going down the track of having other opportunities. Why would we not want to somehow have it aligned so some of those students would have that opportunity too?
Yeah. I'd like to just talk about the amount of people in a group that we've seen in the very nice projects we've seen, like the Woodmen who came here last year and designed an outside learning environment, so on, four. The science fair, the traditional science fair, one or two people. So, so it's a bit of an anachronism now. The other piece about the traditional science fair is that it presents this difficult-to-reach February timeline, where you have to have, you know, your Marlboro High School science fair, then 12 projects can go on to the regional fair in March to get you ready for the state fair in May, when we are suggesting, and the science department has thought long and hard about this, that a demonstration of learning at the end of the year makes so much more sense.
Oh, yeah.
In a culminating activity. And Kathy Rikoff has done extensive research, there are very few schools that have the traditional model of the science fair in the middle of the year anymore. So, and I don't know why the regional and state people aren't responding necessarily to that.
And that's the sad thing.
Probably will eventually.
You know, that's the sad thing.
But on the other hand, we're hoping maybe next year we can offer a research class, a semester research class, for those who want to take part in the traditional, you know, science fair, and they would follow the timeline. So I think we can do both.
Well, and I mean, that's a, that's a great suggestion. It really is because there are so many students, and we've looked at our diverse population, there are many kids that need to really do that work during the school day because they have other commitments after the school day. And so, you know, that's, that's where, you know, you go back to PBL, you know, not having some of that time that's really set aside for these students to do whatever. We almost need to create something like research because we've lost some of that collaboration time.
Yes.
That we're talking about how our staff needs it, our students need it too.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yep. And then just one last point on that, too, is that in talking to the science department, I think it's also really important that some students that are really interested in it and have a project, that it's not a one-year project. Many of these projects go on for multiple years. They get feedback one year, they come back and they change it. So if we offer more than one course so that they can do it, get the feedback, and then come back and make those revisions that are needed. And finally, that we have had limited participation in the science fair the last couple of years, which means that limited students are getting feedback on their work. So if we're expanding it, we have the opportunity for many more students to get feedback from outside people, from other faculty members, about their quality of work, what they're doing. So it's, it's an opportunity.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Minutes of January 9th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, pose carries. Minutes of January 23rd, 2018. Minutes of January 23rd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, pose carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation. CNN, Business Professionals of America State Leadership Conference.
So we're here again to ask approval for the Business Professionals of America State Leadership Conference, which will be held at the Sheraton Terra in Framingham, 30 students and two chaperones. And that is coming up March 3rd through 5th, and there's some supporting documentation of details, as well as students participating and what they are participating in.
She needs to recuse herself.
I need to recuse myself, as I have a student participating.
So noted. Contain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, pose carries.
Best of luck to the BPA kids.
Collective bargaining agreement.
Who wants to do the?
So this is, after we've already approved the MOU, this was a long time coming, needed to get drafted in final form. And it was a one-year contract for, between the committee and the behavior technicians. And the final draft is in front of you for signature tonight, after you've already talked about it in executive session.
Yes, and I can report out that we met in executive session and approved unanimously, for those who were there, the CBA for the one-year contract for behavior techs, and we will begin negotiations with them.
Next week.
Next week.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, pose carries. School calendar.
As per school committee policy 7.200, we present to you the proposed FY '19 school calendar. You'll notice at your place, there was a new copy. There was one mistake that was found by an office support member. The January date in the original that you had had 21 days at the bottom, and it really is 20, which then necessitates a change in that month. The other features that are new, the school committee meetings are in red, interspersed throughout the year rather than at the bottom. And the other exciting addition is that all of the months are noted here with the beginning of the fiscal year, July, and the grade-out dates delineating summer school, as well as the dates for our camp invention. And the professional days, of course, in green, the full ones, and blue, the early-release days.
One, one item is that the district orientation day, while it's slated on the calendar for 28th, those two days might get flipped. We might do orientation day first, and then full-day professional development the second day. We're still working out the details for, for next year.
Can you just, the first thing you said, January days of the month?
If you look on the January block at the top right, the original calendar that we gave you said 21 days of that month with a cumulative count of 96. It is 20 days.
Gotcha.
With a cumulative count of 95.
That was some eagle-eyed person found that.
Yes, yes.
It wasn't Heidi. No, it wasn't. It wasn't. But somebody who I respect in their proof.
Contain a motion?
Oh, just to mention, I, sorry, I double-checked all of the Jewish holidays.
Thank you. Okay. Are we good?
We're good.
Thank you.
The 11th, it's over.
Right.
And this was also presented to Mr. St. George as well, because the MBEA contract asked us to do that, so it has his approval as well.
Thumbs up.
Would you like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Mrs. Matthews, do you have a discussion?
Um, yeah, I guess my question is, again, the timing of the half-day professional days. Do we feel that those are where they should be based on this year?
I want to say we took the exact same date and flipped it to this year, is, is what, what we did.
I mean, because I know, like, historically, the, the springtime used to be for the placements, you know, but.
So there, based on what happened in the Professional Development Committee the last couple of years, the full days are district-based, so those are the choice days, and then the half-days are building-based. And I think that especially the October, you know, the early one, to look at data, to see what they're doing, to make plans based on their school improvement plan, and we're going to be really focusing on.
Right.
The school improvement plans.
Kicking that off, yeah.
And then March for this year has been pretty exciting, because staff are coming forward and saying, we really need to focus on, 5th grade today said, you know, claim evidence reasoning. We really like to focus on that for that half-day. So they're sharing with their building leaders, but the building leaders are very excited about doing what they need right now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was also wondering about that October 25th day that was a little too late. It seems like it's later than it usually is. I mean, it used to be that it would be the day after Columbus Day. And I just don't know if that two-week pushed out is intentional, or if that's too far out, if they're reviewing data? Because it also seems pretty close, too, now you have, you know, a week and a half later, you have the sixth off for professional development.
That, that's, that's the whole thing. I think it's conservative, because we're afraid we won't have the data.
I think we need to have some ground in there for us to get the assessments back to start looking at the student data.
Computer-based, in theory, should be quicker, but it's, the MCAS data is usually, it's going to be big at the secondary level to be looking at it.
So, but if you're using the early-release day, which is building-based, as your first Is that going to be the right focus? You know what I'm saying, that, that, I'm, I'm in the same direction that Denise is, is that I get what you're saying about waiting to November 6th, because that's, now you should have.
No, November, November 6th is going to be a district, that's a choice. That's, everyone gets their choice, and we're also working with some other districts to offer.
Okay.
Do cross-district.
So you're saying that the October 25th is going to be?
Building-based.
Building-based and working on, hopefully, the data.
Data. Or I will be bold enough to say that we need to do specific Aspen training at the elementary schools to, hopefully, we would be.
Wow, you just put yourself out there, didn't you?
Any other questions? CNN, all those in favor, pose carries. Acceptance of donations and gifts. ExxonMobil Educational Alliance, Whitcomb School Math and Science Programs, $500.
Motion to accept.
Motion made, seconded to accept. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, pose carries. MasD E S E, Title III Lip 186 Immigration Grant, $22,110.
Motion to accept.
Motion made, seconded to accept. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, pose carries. Reports to subcommittees. Any reports to subcommittees? CNN, Members Forum. Members Forum, any members want to be formed?
Tomorrow night is the All-City Chorus on Valentine's Day and Ash Wednesday.
Bring your sweetheart.
So be there or be square.
Any other members? CNN.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose carries. Thank you very much.